Next item on the agenda, new library building. Discussion and decision on entering into lease purchase of new library building. Does the library have a representative?
Your foreheads.
We're back again to ask, so we can move along with this, to address maybe Tammy's concern we've got. I can tell her that on the 100 year floodplain...
Richard, could you stand a little closer? I'm sorry.
All right. I can say, Anthony, tell me if I'm wrong here. The library itself will be 15 feet above the 100 year floodplain. The basement will be three foot above the 100 year floodplain elevation.
There's been a floodplain permit?
There has been a study, there has been a permit, there's been a study, and the elevation is 967 feet.
Well, the 100 year flood elevation is 776 for that general area. And then the first floor of the library was at 792, and then the basement level would be 779.
Yeah. So that would address the floodplain issue. Now, if you want a minute, okay.
Who is this gentleman?
Okay. Anthony is the engineer for Webber, Stanley Webber. And I really would like to defer to him to answer any questions that you might have, and have him here to answer any of the other questions.
When do you want us to ask you the question? When you're done?
Anytime.
I've got one right now I'd like to ask.
Okay.
How did you determine these elevations as how the 50 year floodplain when we got pictures here where it's underwater? I'm kind of curious about that.
I'd like to think when he's finished they're on that flood.
You know, I'm not doubting anybody's word, I just want to know how this arrived. Well, you can browse, FEMA has a website.
Yeah.
It's an official government website, and they show you what they call the 100 year flood elevation, which is what they give on it.
So could you stand a little closer? I'm sorry.
The 100 year elevation is what the whole country goes by. And then they have maps which determine what that elevation is that points along the river. Because it changes every so often. So anyway, in the Neely Avenue area where the bridge is and everything, they have a number here on the map that says 776 feet. That's 776 feet means sea level. So it's just a number, but that basically coincides with the ground elevation that you would find on topographic map. So that's what the government's determined that is. Now, I don't know what year interval the flood was in the 50s. It could have been 100, it could have been 500, it could have been 1,000. I'm not familiar with the history, but so I don't know what elevation that was at. And I looked at the pictures too, and they were pretty interesting. As a matter of fact, one picture shows a house we just tore down, which camera see very clearly where the water was, it was personal. Anyway, but that's what this is based on, and that's how we determined that. The 792 foot elevation of the first floor of our library would be approximately two feet above the street, Marie Street. So that would be higher than the street itself on the first floor. The basement would be above the street. So that's as far as the 100 year elevation, that's what, that's how that's determined.
Okay. Thank you. Somebody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that the 50 flood, while you saw the photographs there, it was originally thought to be 100 year, then it was advanced to a 500 year flood, and then the final declaration was a 700 year flood. And the odds of that happening again, you would probably be more apt to be struck by lightning. That was just a freak of nature, and no one can say that it won't happen, but the odds are, you know, just all the elements came to a perfect storm for that. And I know that because we're doing a 1950 flood presentation for the Board of Education, so we have done extensive research on that flood, and I do have the documentation for that.
Thank you.
And she's right, I mean, I was a floodplain director in Washington County, Ohio for about five years. And then the period from 1900 to, I think it was 1964, Marietta had six 100 year floods in a 60 year period. So it's a probability is all it really is. Just because you've been given this number by the government that says it's safe for this period, it doesn't really, it's not as literal as it seems.
Exactly. It could happen tomorrow, if it happened 1,000 years from now.
Yes, ma'am.
The other thing that kind of concerns me with this, I'm in complete support of getting a new library. The situations that we've had in the county, we seem to be having more and less flood events per year, not necessarily to the degree that happened in the 50s. We've had a lot of environmental damage down to our county, the wealth paths, the pipeline jobs. There's been a lot of education that's been removed, a lot of clear cutting, plus the fact that due to certain other regulations, our creeks and stream banks have not been cleaned out. So we've had a lot of silt and sedimentation filling them up. So that puts certain situations more at risk. And that is something that needs to be considered. I mean, the elevations on topographic maps, on floodplain maps, when was the last time the floodplain maps were actually updated in this area? I mean, those are all things that concern me.
The date on this map is 2011, so they probably determined those elevations sometime prior to that, probably within a year. And I don't know how often they update them, but they do update them. They sure are correct, they change.
I know a lot of times they won't do the updating unless it's requested, and you go through a process, especially if you're looking at future pieces of property, so.
Now, the one thing about West Union, West Union has been studied, or has actually
No, it's right in front.
Right in the front.
come out in surveys, but I don't know when.
Oh, so the building is...
Drive in or...
Okay, so the building doesn't...
So that's how they, you know, you're fortunate in that sense that they actually come out
No, it's a long issue.
Okay.
Yeah, it faces the interstate, there's a cover drive through where you can park and and do a study instead of just, well, I know, take a picture and then estimate. So you do have a little better information in a lot of areas. unload or whatever you want to do.
Thank you.
You'll enter ground elevation, so it's no steps. It is still, you know, your point's still valid. Actually, it's going to be in range. All right. Commission?
Thank you.
Hey Jeff?
I can answer any other questions later on too.
Ask his question, yeah, you.
Did you come with diagrams of the proposed library?
Me?
No, Jeff, here. Does the school, you think, is the biggest, the library's a good thing? I mean, as a school, I mean, I put you on the spot.
I can tell you that what we've done over the past couple of years is we've tried
Anthony, did you bring your news?
Yes. These are just preliminary, but the board's looked at them and everything.
to do more things where we've had summer reading projects and programs where actually,
Are there multiple copies?
I think last summer we did a project with a couple of teachers where we actually put out reading lists of specific books and things that we were actually encouraging our students
Yeah, at least three copies.
Okay.
and their families to do more, participating with the local library, because there's all kinds of data that's going to say that if kids aren't reading over the summer, there's a regression that occurs. And anything we can do with the local library is things that we can do to lessen that gap that occurs. So I mean, we're always going to be in support of anything that's going to be related to reading and education, and that's, that gap we're trying to make up.
Makes sense, because, you know, kids go summertime, go pick up a book in the summer.
Is that what you wanted to know?
Yeah, basically, yeah. Also too, I think as a taxpayer, okay, it's a lot of money.
Sure.
And I think the kids in Dodges County needs to be upgraded a little bit. And I guess my point, I mean, we can't sit back and be in the past. We have to upgrade ourselves. I think the library is one of those things we need to do.
Again, I don't know the background of how this has transpired with the county commission or anything, and I certainly don't want to step into political business, but I do know the comments that we get from parents are with current situation. Access to the library sometimes is mentioned as it's not that convenient, parking up here is an issue. So those are the things that I've actually heard when we're talking with parents about reading programs and about accessing the current library. So those would be things that I would assume that in a different location would help, it might allow us to do more than we've been able to do. But I know that she can speak to the collaborative project that we did with the reading program. And then two summers ago, we actually had them come over to the school, and we wanted the local library to put up like their books of the week and things that we wanted kids to see, that they might not be at our library, but they could come over here and get books in different genres of reading. We did that, and actually they had little bulletin board up in the elementary school promoting. So we've done a couple of things to try to collaborate with them, is that...
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you, Jeff.
Dottie's want to address that as well?
Yes, sir.
As a board, she's on the Board of Education and the Library Board, so, Dottie?
I was hoping you'd let me talk to you a little bit in bed. Jotted down a couple of things because I'm not a public speaker, and I get very nervous when I do these things. But I've been coming to the library since it was one room downstairs, and Lil Wetzel was the librarian in the basement here of this courthouse. I've been coming a long, long time. I've been coming a lot. I brought my children, brought my grandchildren. When I was a teacher, I brought my kids. I've always used the library. I just think it's an element that you get your kids to read, you have to take them wherever the people are reading. I was in the library yesterday, and I could hardly move, it was so crowded. Every one of the computers was occupied. And I wonder how the girls could move in there. Of course, there were people in there, and there is too. You know, this is them. Well, they use the Lions Building for their story hour because there's no room over here. And they also show movies, and this has been very popular in the community, they go to the Lions Building. Well, when I come to the library more often than not, I park at the Methodist Church. Well, I have many friends who are my age and older that have given up, they can't get here anymore. It's just too much trouble. So we've looked diligently, we really have, for two years, looked for a site. And we'd like to keep it in the main aisle where people can get to it. We don't want to put it two or three miles out of town. I just, I know several people have mentioned to me the cost, they're worried about the cost. My granddaughter's building a house right now. They thought they had $30,000 for the out payment, and they found out that that $30,000 has consisted of the preparation of the site. And building costs are just not what they used to be, and not what we liked them to be. Anyway, we need some place that people can get to. And like Jeff says, any time we can get our kids to read. And of course, there are a lot more things down in the reading in our office. So thanks.
Thank you. Didn't Kathy, didn't you tell me that you had looked at multiple sites?
I have, looked at 17 places.
That you diligently looked at?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I've walked this town three or four times with Brian, and we walked, and we looked, and we looked, and we drove, and yes, 17 different sites. Now, some of them we didn't use because they were out of the way, I mean, they were, they would be here, they wouldn't be good. Most of them, I mean, we talked, we looked at them and said, yeah, that would be a good one, so we went to the owners. One of two things, either they wouldn't talk to you, or they were wanting almost $2 million for their land, or maybe not quite that much, but you know, I'm exaggerating just a little bit, but not a lot. They didn't want to sell, or they wanted an exorbitant price for it. And most of it was they didn't want to sell. So yes, we have tried at least 17 different sites in West Union. And yes, some of them, most of them, all of them were farther from the water than these are, but this is the only one that's coming.
What about the high school?
What about the high school?
Yeah, why don't you put it up there and add a high school?
Well, first off, if you start tearing down the high school...
Why tear it down?
Do you have any idea what it would cost with the asbestos that's in it? Fellas, you all, you've heard about asbestos removal.
What about the annex?
We get toward the annex, and there's just so much work that needs to be done, it's cracking, and there's a lot of problems up there.
And, okay, and the other thing is, okay, first of all, it is out of the loop, and getting nothing down there in the winter. You know, my sister lives up there, so I know what the road was like this winter. I was up frequently checking on her. Now, will our patrons drive up there? Some maybe, a lot no, because of the roads. And you just drive up through there now, and there's no snow on it, and you're almost like driving down Route 18 with potholes. So you've got that. Then also, you say, talk about the annex. When I thought up there, when I left, there was one hole that I could almost stick my hand all the way outside. Now, I know how it was built, and it was in my shop, and you could see light all the way out, and you could almost stick my hand through it.
Who's going to pay for this library?
Well, we're hoping that...
Can I answer?
Yes, would you?
We have, so far, we've put in the budget for next year, the $114,000, which is the 9,500 per month times 12 payments. We have tentatively earmarked another quarter of a million dollars to be set aside to apply to the, we can't really call it indebtedness, we'll have to call it lease fees at this point because it has to be, it has to be structured as a lease purchase. And in addition to that, we've got monies coming in. Our thought at this point, now, obviously, I can't be, you can't hold me to this because once again, I don't have that crystal ball to set up here, but our thought is that, and I think the attorney for, your attorney indicated that it would have to be leased for a period of at least five years in order to qualify to, let's just say circumnavigate the prevailing wage laws, which adds 30 to 40 percent to the cost of any public building. So our thought is, and our hope is that within five years, we can have the money set aside to pay for that out of current revenues. If it couldn't be, I mean, it would have to be negotiated with Mr. Webb as far as exercising, and I think that can be, that can be structured in the agreement. But if it was going to be paid off in five years, then obviously, we wouldn't anticipate paying off the full amount. It's just like if you mortgage your home for 30 years, and after 15 years you have the money to pay it off, you don't have to pay off the remaining number of payments times your payment.
I understand that.
Okay. So that would be structured in the agreement, and like I say, we've got, in this year's budget, we've got a lot of things that we would like to do, but if things continue as they are now, I think that within five years, we can probably have it paid off and have it purchased. But that's my opinion only, please understand.
But you can't guarantee that, and you can't guarantee our taxes won't raise for this building that a lot of people don't want.
Well, there's some people that don't want it, there's a lot of people that do want it. Let me address a couple of things about the price. You hear the $2.85 million, and whenever someone says $2.85 million, you hear this, ah, yes, and that is a lot of money. But let me ask you this. Does anybody here know of anybody in the county who has either bought a house or built a house, or is planning on building a house, that it's close to $500,000 between all of the, all of the costs involved? Does anybody know of anybody? Now, we all sit here and we think, $500,000, that's a lot of money. But if I say to you, this person is considering building a house and it's half a million dollars, what's your thought? Your thought is, oh my God, that's a lot of money. And it is, but the perception is, when you say half a million, your perception is not the same as when you say $500,000.
I understand that, and the thing of it is, I'm not going to be paying for that woman's house if she can't make her house payments. That's the difference between your scenario and to what we're dealing with now. And who you leasing this land from? I mean, where's this library going to be built? Who's the money going to that you're going to pay for leasing?
The builder.
Who's the builder?
Stanley Webb.
Okay, and you're going to pay him $9,000 every month?
Well...
For him to build a library? Is it just a library?
Okay, we could go, I could go to the USDA and borrow $2 million at 5 percent interest, paying $11,691.80 a month.
For how long?
For 25 years, 300 months, 300 payments, which would total 3.507540.25. That's how much that million, that's...
And the other thing is, if you ever mortgaged a home, and let's just say that you mortgaged $100,000, and you mortgaged it for 30 years, now, interest rates are different now, but they used to say three times what you mortgaged is what you end up paying. So if you look at it from that respect. Now, I, the amount that you would finance at 4 percent interest, 1.765 million dollars at 4 percent, $9,500 a month for 25 years pays it off. 1.765. Now, like I say, when you say 2.85 million, yes, that's the whole ball, that's everything. But that would be the equivalent of financing the purchase and the interest and purchasing the land.
I understand all that.
Okay.
But the thing of it is, don't you think, since this is such a big thing, that it should be the county who has the vote on whether it should be built or not? I mean, really seriously, because if you can't guarantee me it's not my taxpaying dollar that's going to go to this building, if you by some chance can't do it the way you're looking at it, you're going to be able to do it. And then out of the blue, sky, 10 years from now, ooh, we get a big tax jack because you can't pay this library. Well, I didn't want that library, so why should I have to pay for a building you guys decided that you needed?
Let me ask you...
When you should allow the county to vote.
Okay, how frequently would you suggest we have elections to vote on all these issues?
Well, when it comes to something this big, I think one election would should be good enough. I'm going to say, I've never been in this library but one time, and I've lived in Dodges County for 47 years. Now, you all know about the guy's...
It is a shame.
Because I pick up a book and I read it. But kids nowadays don't read books. They've got their laptop, they've got their little tablets. You guys are taking them and putting them in the schools. You're going to the school to read, why don't you teach your kids how to read? We learn how to read in school, what's the difference now that you can't teach your child how to read in school?
The services we offer at the library is West Virginia Reads, and it's for eBooks. And we are, you can get your eBooks to us free.
But the thing of it is, it's not, to me, you don't see very many kids nowadays read. And I'm not saying that you're not going to have some that do it, but to me, it's not worth $2.85 million to build a building that you probably won't have a whole lot of people through these years.
On our summer reading program, we can have anywhere between 85 and 100 kids sign up.
Okay, but that's still, to me, not worth $2.85 million.
I'm sorry, I can fill that later.
Well, so that's what I'm saying, why don't you let the county vote? I'm not wanting to fight with you, I'm just saying, why don't you let us vote for this? If it's not going to come out of our pocket, and it's going to be you guys that's paying it, more power to you.
We spend taxpayers' money.
Exactly, my point.
And we are elected...
Exactly, my point.
We are elected to spend the taxpayers' money.
But the thing of it is, don't you think us taxpayers should have the right to say what you're going to do with our money? Because if it wasn't for us taxpayers, you three wouldn't be sitting up there.
If you...
Now, don't you think we have that right?
No.
Oh, well, then why are you sitting there?
You have the right...
How did you get elected?
Ma'am?
No, sir.
If you're going to interrupt me...
I'm not interrupting, I'm listening to you, and you're not answering me. Who pays your salary?
The salary...
Who pays your salary? Just answer it. I called the manager.
You are very close to being escorted out of here. So if you want to ask a question, ask the question.
All right, I did. Who pays your salary?
Then give the responder time to respond without interrupting. Understand? We'll find out pretty quickly what the circumstances are for being ejected from the meeting. Now, yes, we are elected, and we are elected to spend, and that's our primary function, is to determine the budget. And this is a representative form of government, and if you don't like what your representatives are, the way they are voting, then come the next election, you vote for someone else. It's very simple. But you can't have elections every week in order to determine what the public wants to do.
You never answered my question. I asked you who paid your wage.
I did answer your question.
I didn't ask you for a big story, I just asked for you, who paid your wage.
It comes from the county commission budget, which is taxpayers' money.
Exactly, my point.
And...
So doesn't that make you work for us, the county? If we're paying your wages, don't you think that makes us your employer?
Not necessarily.
Oh, well, then I guess paying taxes, we shouldn't have to pay that.
You elect your representatives to make decisions for you, and, you know, we've spent too much time on this particular question.
Could I make one quick comment?
Sure.
On this library situation? Because we do allocate money for this and that, and the streets, and our seniors, and all of that is good and necessary. But our youth is necessary as well. And by building this very much needed library, and I'm saying this off the cuff, we show our youth, the ones who are going to be sitting where we all are now, that they're worth putting in a library so that they can get a better...
It's very simple. But, you can't have elections every week in order to determine what the public wants to do.
You never answered my question. I asked you who pays your wage.
I did ask you a question.
I didn't ask you for a big story, I just asked for who pays your wage.
It comes from the county commission budget, which is taxpayers' money.
Exactly, my point.
And...
So, doesn't that make you work for us, the county? If we're paying your wages, don't you think that makes us your employer?
Not necessarily.
Oh, well, then I guess paying taxes, we shouldn't have to pay that.
You elect your representatives to make decisions for you, and, you know, we've spent too much time on this particular question.
Could I make one quick comment?
Sure.
On this library situation? Because we do advocate money for this, and that, and the streets, and our seniors, and all of that is good and necessary. But our youth is necessary as well, and by building this very much needed library, and I'm saying this off the cuff, we show our youth, the ones who are going to be sitting where we all are now, that they're worth putting in a library so that they can get a better education. Because Dodgerage County's students struggle in the outside world, and a lot of that, it's not the teacher's fault, and it's not the librarian's fault. The modern education system is not readily available to our youth, and also, our parents don't teach our youth that this education is necessary to get into the real world that's out there beyond our county border. And I did, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak, but I think it's a wonderful thing and overdue.
Mary Ann?
I just wanted to say that I'm an avid reader. I've lived in this county for thirty-four, thirty-five years, and I will bet you ten to one that I am at the library at least once a week, if not more than once a week. My preference of choice to read is a book. And, for children, you know, as a child, the library was an escape for me. Books were my escape. Books are important, whether you read them electronically or physically. But the other thing, having gone to this library for the last thirty-five years, I have sat with children that have come in there, and I have talked to them and helped them. And for them to have a place to go where they feel safe, where they are finding an escape from whatever life, or whatever home life, or world, or whatever, the fact that they're discovering things and have a place with people that work in there, that take the time and the energy and the effort to spend with these children. But the other thing is, you're all talking about kids. Our senior population uses the library. The senior population is just as important as the children, because for a lot of seniors, reading is also an escape. And it's also a social situation, you know, where, I know every time I go, and the folks working there always ask, "How are you?" etc., etc. I mean, it's a welcoming environment. I'm not exactly completely thrilled with the cost, but to have a more accessible site would be nice. And in the interim, while it gets built, I would suggest taking those spots out front here and making them all designated to the library. We did the designation for county employees, to allow some of the seniors, we only have one handicapped spot for how many people? You know, one handicapped spot. And even though there's extra parking for folks, you know, I walked out of there a couple of weeks ago with a handicapped person that was parked behind the sheriff's office. I thought it was really sad, you know? This guy struggled to get up there. But, there's no reason why all these spots out here, the judge is perfectly capable of walking, you know? So, it's like designate those spots for the library specifically, especially for seniors. And if there's an issue with it, they can get vouchers to put out there that, you know, they need that extra help. But to me personally, I would be, even when I was working in Clarksville, I didn't use the Clarksville library, I made it a point to come in here on Saturdays. So, that's just my own personal opinion. The other question I have is, if you do a payoff in five years, does the cost go down?
Yeah, that would be, that would have to be structured into the...
Yeah, I mean, if the cost goes down, because all the calculations right now are structured around the nine, 500 a month for X number of years. If the payoff is, in five years, what will the cost be at that point in time? Just, which might alleviate some taxpayer concerns.
That would be part of the negotiation process between the library's attorney and our assistant prosecutor, and a representative for Mr. Webb. I'm in complete agreement that if it's paid off in five or ten years, or whatever, that it should be much less.
Yes. How many grants have you looked at, or have you looked for grants to assist in purchasing You know, I see where you're coming from about the vote, because we're used to, with the school system, whenever they make these huge decisions, they come to us for a bond. If you get down the line and you can afford to pay for it, if you've already purchased the building, would you be able to put it up in front of the taxpayers for a bond?
For a bond?
For a bond.
We haven't looked at that, I haven't talked to our lawyer about that. Would you ever...
It would probably...
I mean, I can address, in a roundabout way, that concern. The way the lease will be structured, if the county's able to pay it off, you know, the lease will be structured so that the county is not indebted or stuck in this contract for twenty-five years. So, if there's, if something happens and, you know, they don't get the money, there's an out for the county. There's an out that will allow the commission to finish out the year that they're in, and then, you know, either renegotiate or vacate the library. If that's paid off, then what's left is the operation of the building, so there's not a need for a bond for the purchase price. Does that make sense?
What I'm trying to say is, if they get in trouble, if we get in trouble in the future, we moved our library down to this fabulous building, they're used to it, they have a spot of their own, it would be awful to pull them out of there. Do you have a way out? Is there a way out to where we can keep the building? Either through a bond, through a loan, or something of that matter, to make it more permanent?
All right, we have been, USDA, we have talked to USDA, and they, we love to borrow, loan us the money. But, thirty years, they will more than double their money.
Let me just throw out a question here. I want to seek an answer, other than to say, if tonight, any of our personal homes burned down to the ground, would you have, have you, do you have someplace that you're going to move and live from tomorrow on? We don't, we don't, we don't have that. We don't have that plan. Yes, you probably know, "Well, I could live with my family," or whatever, but the point is, you don't think in terms of those kind of things.
I have two questions, one will call the answer to the other one, and it doesn't have anything to do with finance. Is this building sprinkled?
Anthony?
Is this building sprinkled?
The building itself is not sprinkled, no.
Has these plans been to the fire marshal's office for approval?
No, these are plenty.
Okay, well, you've got a lot of problems if you're going without sprinkling.
Well, no.
He's a great set.
I've read the code, and it's West Virginia laws, and sprinklers are not required.
For a public...
It's based on square footage.
Public occupancy?
It's irrelevant, public or not. Based on whether the building is sprinkled or not, it's based on several factors. One, the biggest factor is the square footage, and also, use, and then it's based on other minor, you know, height, length, width. But it's all been applied in the American Building Code, which is what was to be...
I have a question, I think it's...
And all been...
Anthony, I think a better question is, and forgive me, is the fire suppression system in this building going to be adequate to meet the code if there's a problem? And, is it up to code as far as evacuation routes and that kind of thing?
Yeah, it needs to be addressed, and we need those requirements, up to both floors, upstairs, first floor's, you know, it's handicapped accessible, by wheelchair everywhere. And so is the second floor, you just can't get from the first floor to the second, there's no elevator. Because of cost, inspections, maintenance, and all that stuff, so they should not have an elevator. But, you know, we've looked at the code, and, you know, right now, we feel like there's no need for sprinkling. Now, the building will have security, you know, monitors secured, and monitor fire, there's smoke detectors, those kind of things, so those are part of it. Yes, sir?
I just have a simple question. In all this time, we've been talking about this, because I've been hearing about this forever, have we not applied for a grant somewhere along the line to maybe kick in ten, fifteen thousand? I mean, I'm just asking, I have no idea, but it would be nice, you know, for the county to, hey, here's what I thought, or maybe you can get it later, I don't know, it's just a question.
Well, I don't think that would be a possibility, because we're not building it or constructing. And I think, I think, now, I suppose there might be a grant available for leasing, but I don't know that.
I don't either.
They're probably not.
Just not if it's nice?
Well, it would be if we were building it. However, if we were building it, we would be subject to the prevailing wage, which is going to add thirty to forty percent to the cost.
I called Central Supply, and just was asking about costs going up and everything. Thirty years ago, concrete was fifty dollars a yard. Ten years ago, it was ninety dollars a yard. Today, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a yard. It goes up five, six percent every year. There's a website, too, that I went on, it's called buildingjournal.com, and you can put in your state, commercial building, your square footage and everything, and it was based from Huntington, West Virginia. And the median cost for a 12,000 square foot building was 2,600, 469,000 dollars. For the high end, it was 3,265,000. That's for a commercial building.
That's the cost, not the, not what you would pay, we're asking you for the money.
Yes, yeah. Any other questions, comments?
I have a sheet here, if anybody wants to look at this. It's just about all of our stats over the last year, what the library at West Virginia and Center Point, how we serve the county, and I've got several here if you want to look at it, in case anybody's in doubt that no one uses our library.
Does anybody else want?
Okay.
I agree, as you all said, it is a lot of money. We all know that. But as a retired educator, the children are the commodity that we have, and anything that this county can do to offer, to help educate them, I think is a plus. We've all been there. I see it, the technological advances, and most of you who know me know that I am not the most knowledgeable, literate person when it comes to computers, iPads, tablets, I don't even like my telephone, but I have to have it. But the kids can use those to download books and research so much information out of the library. It's okay. This library is crowded. I've been in there until the library, in my opinion, is very essential to the education of the people in this county.
Can I say something? I'm speaking as a senator, I'm not advocating for the library, against the library, or whatever, although I do like to see our kids have as the best that we can have. But, as for the lady here that was talking about kids don't read, I'm in this library quite a bit, and I'm fortunate, I live in town, I can get here easily. But I've been in there numerous times, about an evening, Saturdays, and I see mothers come in with their children. And it's not the same people all the time, so it's different people. And they come in, and the kids go to the children's section, and the mother goes where she wants to go to work. Those kids come out with books, and I don't mean they kick out one or two books, they go out with bags of books that they read. And I see this all the time, and I've been in there at one of those, very crowded, the girls would run to death trying to wait on everybody. Not every child has access to a computer. They go to the library and look at things on a computer. But as to kids not reading books, no. They go in and they're reading books, actual books, and they go out there with bags of books. And the next week, they're back for another bag of books.
And how old are these kids? How old are they?
All ages. I say all ages, and I see, somebody just mentioned about the seniors also. I see seniors go in and out there with bags of books. Then, you know, I'm one of them. I go in and I bring out four, five books, and I'm not alone. I see people, it seems like every time I go in the library, I see something that I've never seen in there before.
I'm not saying you don't need a new library. I'm just saying, I don't think a new library should be 2.85 million dollars.
All our line is...
Now, that's what I'm saying.
About people, kids not reading.
No, I said, kids don't read. I've never, in the generation of kids, I've got older children, and their friends don't read a book, they'll sit there on their laptops, and they'll sit there on their little iPads, and they'll sit there on their cell phones. And I go out to the library in Harrisville, and I don't see people sitting around reading a book, they're on the computer. You understand?
Well, that's part, that's part of the library.
And I understand, that's part of the library. But to me, you can find a library, or a place to put a library, that's not going to cost us 2.85, that's a lot of money to be in debt, and that's a lot to be hanging over our heads.
But I don't go to the library to sit there and read either. I can't buy the common, that's what the library is for. It's for people who want to, I want on the computer...
You don't have a building around here that you can't buy? Like this mansion over here?
Ma'am, I've listed seven places where we've been.
I mean, to me, that's just, I could die tomorrow, and my kids would have this hanging on their head. Do you see what I'm saying?
Now, you mentioned the mansion. If we bought the mansion, we'd be in exactly the same predicament we are right there. No place to park.
You can't dig the land behind it and tear that down and build it there?
Four, four, five parks each space.
Well, I don't know, because I don't know. I heard that the mansion was being sold for 300,000 dollars.
Well, that was an inaccurate assumption.
What?
Yes. I have no idea. It's not for sale. I was told, I was told by one of the majority owners that it was not for sale, and what I told him, because it was offered us, and it was on the agenda one time, and we, before the meeting, I was told, called and told that it was not for sale, so, anyway. And there wasn't even a, wasn't even a suggestion of, "Well, maybe it might be for sale for a higher price," it just wasn't for sale. And so, anyway, and that's what I indicated at that meeting where I tabled it in defense. We have a comment back here?
I clean the library, and we clean the mansion. And they don't think people don't come into the library and just come and play with it this one evening. And we've seen that there's people in and out of the library quite a bit evidently. And we clean the mansion, and that would not be a good place for like, the rooms are not... The rooms are not big enough, I don't think, for a library. And the parking too. But I said, "If you don't think people don't come in the library, just come over and clean with us one week and you'll..."
One more question. Kathy, or you can answer. Will libraries stay open longer in the hours? Would the hours be longer?
Longer.
Going to depend on staffing?
I understand what you're saying. I understand. Would we consider...
Yeah. Would we consider, yes. And the library will be available for people to use, I mean, partially anyway, after hours. Yeah. Would we now stay open on Monday evening and half day on Saturday?
Okay.
Yeah. And we used to close on Wednesday and now we stay open all day Wednesday.
We're open every day, Monday nights from 7:00, the rest of the week till 5:00. And Saturdays, 9:30, 12:00.
Okay. And we could probably make that available or something if it depends on staffing.
Yeah, staff, I understand, and money.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, reader.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Okay. Well, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And which one? It's in your box, in your hands now.
Okay.
We'd like to work with you.
All right. And just to address the one question a little further. Yes, the taxpayers pay our salary. But suppose Mike tells me, now here's what I want done. And suppose Ben tells me, "That's not what I want done." And suppose Mary Jane says, "I don't like either one of those ideas, I like the third idea." So, so just, you know, they're taxpayers. What are we to do?
Bet to the county.
Yep. Nope, that's not the way it's set up. We are representative form of government. And we have been elected. And we are charged with making the decisions for the county. And we are going to make those decisions for the county. And if there was a need for a bond issue, obviously, that has to... By law, has to be put before the voters. But this is not an issue of needing a bond. We are going to be able to fund this through our general fund. And if it became an issue, you know, it would have to be announced. And if we were going to try and convert to buy and issue bonds, then obviously, that has to go before the voters. But if we can do it as we anticipate, we aren't going to have to burden the taxpayers with any additional taxes. So, and as a matter of fact, in case you weren't aware, for the last two years, the county commission has reduced their share of the tax burden. And we're anticipating reducing it again now. It's not a tremendous amount of money on each of your tax bills because the county commission portion is a small portion of what you pay in property taxes. But we have reduced and we are anticipating reducing once again. So, we're not looking to to set up something that the taxpayers are going to be burdened forever and your taxes are going to increase dramatically. But as we all know, we don't have crystal balls. We can't say for sure that your taxes will never go up. One more comment, Mariana, and then we're going to entertain motions.
Okay. One question, I just wanted to question something you just said.
Okay.
Are you saying that pretty much because of how you feel with the representative form of government, that you will not take input from county residents and listen to their concerns about issues?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
I listen to everybody. But by listening to everybody, I hear lots of opinions. And, you know, and there's an issue coming up on this that later on in the agenda. I listen to a lot of opinions. And those opinions generally are not going to agree with yours a lot of times. And so, once again, majority rules. That's what I listen to. I listen to the majority. I can't speak for anybody else, but that's what I... All right. You're welcome. Okay. All the comments have been made. I assume that there are no comments that anybody wants to make. So, does anybody have a...
I'll make one comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Before you get... I know we've been talking about for a long time. I just want to make one comment. Not pointing fingers at any one person or any organization whatsoever. Okay? I'm in full confidence that this building is going to be built strictly to the West Virginia Building Code in all respects. And my other comment is, if it does not, I am not in favor of this at all.
Can I comment to that?
Sure, yes.
Commissioner, if it doesn't meet the West Virginia Code, I'm not, as your attorney, going to advise you guys to enter into a lease. And as a matter of fact, I would have a duty not to allow you to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody? Then, not hearing anyone else, I will make the motion that we approve entering into a negotiations for a lease purchase agreement for a new library with the Stanley Web Company and to include prepayment incentives. Worded however... So that... Worded however so that it will still qualify as a lease. We have a motion on the floor. I'm not going to repeat it. But all in favor, sitting in five, saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, Library Board? You will need to talk with your attorney and the assistant prosecutor. And we'll get an agreement drawn up. And then we'll proceed from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.